Good evening, this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council for Monday, July the first, 2019. If you stick around late enough, we will tell you the fireworks are on. I'd like to call this meeting to order. invocation this evening will be given by the Reverend Jeffrey Dick of the First Congregational Church.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us be in a spirit of prayer. Holy and gracious God, in this holiday week, we give you thanks for our freedom as a nation and as a community. We give you thanks for the celebrations that will take place on the third of July and the fourth of July. As our city becomes filled with many individuals coming into to celebrate and observe and participate, we pray for the safety of all. We especially lift to you all of our emergency personnel and the extra work that they will do, additional city workers that will be called into service. Guide them and lead them in the task at hand, protect them, help our community to be a safe place to celebrate this wonderful holiday. We give you thanks for the blessings of this community and the celebrations that are at hand. We ask that you be with our city leaders this night, guide them and lead them in all of their deliberations. We thank you for their service and pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jeffrey. Can y'all join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now the fun part of the night. We have a lot of royalty in the room. So at this time, what we're gonna do is, we have proclamations for everybody here. I've got a key for a certain Mr. Nelson. And then maybe what we'll do is, we'll read these proclamations one at a time. If you'd like to stand when yours is being read, so we can know who's who. And then when we get done, we'll do a photo op up here. We've got some swag floating around here Travis has, so we'll get you all loaded up before you head out. So let's take these. And again, thank you, everybody, for being here. Everyone getting, sorry, let's go first. Alicia, let's start with that one.
City of South Haven Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas to make it publicly known and to recognize Alicia Moore finalist for Miss South Haven 2019 for her accomplishments and contributions leading up to this honor. And whereas Alicia Moore was on the yearbook staff and earned a Board of Education awards for academic excellence all four years. And whereas Alicia Moore was a member of the track and field team where she earned an all-conference award. And whereas Alicia Moore was also a member of the sideline cheer team for all four years and the competitive cheer team for two years. And whereas Alicia Moore volunteers at cheerleading camps, Habitat for Humanity, Peer-to-Peer, and the National Blueberry Festival. And whereas this fall, Alicia Moore will be attending Kendall College of Art in the fall to major in interior design and minor in furniture design. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of South Haven wishes to recognize Alicia Moore for her accomplishments and service to her community. Signed, Mayor Scott Smith, City of South Haven.
Next, we have Grace. This, Grace.
I've got Grace.
I'm Chloe.
Okay, I've got Grace. City of South Haven Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas to make it publicly known and to recognize Grace Lyons finalist for Miss South Haven 2019 for her accomplishments and contributions leading up to this honor. And whereas Grace Lyons is a recent graduate of South Haven High School, she was involved in the National Honor Society and received numerous Board of Education awards for academic excellence. And whereas Grace Lyons was also a member of the varsity softball, volleyball, and basketball programs. And whereas Grace Lyons is a member of the Michigan Army National Guard and looks forward to returning to Fort Leonard Wood this summer to complete her advanced individual training. And whereas Grace Lyons volunteers with Color Me Kind in Costa Rica where she worked with our local key club to donate supplies, the St. Paul Lutheran Church where she is a Sunday school teacher, with softball camps, and as a referee for Little Lady Rams basketball program. And whereas this fall, Grace Lyons will be attending Saginaw Valley State to study criminal justice. Now therefore be resolved that the City of South Haven wishes to recognize Grace Lyons for her accomplishments and the service to her community. Signed, Mayor Scott Smith, City of South Haven.
It's my pleasure to read this to Chloe. City of South Haven, Michigan, Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas to make it publicly known and to recognize Chloe Kinney for earning the titles of first runner-up for Miss South Haven and Miss Congeniality 2019 and for her accomplishments and contributions leading up to this honor. And whereas Chloe Kinney is a recent graduate of South Haven High School where she was part of the Be Nice Program, Youth Advisory Committee, the Drama Department, and the Softball Program. And whereas Chloe Kinney was a member of the National Honor Society, the Elementary Student Mentor Program, the South Haven Robotics Team where she was selected for the Most Spirited Award. Whereas Chloe Kinney was volunteer for the National Blueberry Festival, the South Haven Steelheaders Fish Bowl, Boil, Christmas Hope Toy Drive, Moose International, and Van Buren Youth Camp. And whereas Chloe Kinney was attending, will be attending, Grand Valley State University in the fall to pursue a degree in health sciences with the ultimate goal to become a nurse. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of South Haven wishes to recognize Chloe Kinney for her accomplishments and service to her community. Signed, Mayor Scott Smith, City of South Haven.
City of South Haven Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas to make it publicly known and to recognize Elizabeth Johnson who was crowned Miss South Haven 2019 and for her accomplishments and contributions leading up to this honor. Whereas Elizabeth Johnson is dual-enrolled at South Haven High School and Lake Michigan College, has received Board of Education awards for outstanding academic achievement. And whereas Elizabeth Johnson has been a soloist of the South Haven Choir and Corral, was chosen to participate in the Cadet Teacher Academy, is a member of the South Haven Softball Team and the Equestrian Team, participates in the Dramatic Arts Program. And whereas Elizabeth Johnson shows horses nationally and has worked diligently to obtain numerous state and national titles. And whereas Elizabeth Johnson placed in the top ten in the Blossom Time Pageant in March. And whereas Elizabeth Johnson volunteers for the Van Buren Technical Center, Love in the Name of Christ daycare, food drives, the Icebreaker Festival. And whereas, following graduation, Elizabeth Johnson plans to attend either the University of Michigan or the University of Colorado to pursue her dream of becoming a pediatrician. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of South Haven wishes to recognize Elizabeth Johnson for her accomplishments and service to her community. Signed, Mayor Scott Smith, City of South Haven.
All right, before we read the last one, Mr. Joe Nelson, when we're done here, we're gonna take a brief minute, we'll do a photo op, and then you're all free to sneak out unless you wanna stick around for the last part of the meeting. And also just, I'm hoping as people listen to all these accomplishments and really how proud your community is of you, I mean, these are amazing things, I hear, you know, bright futures ahead. Make sure to thank your, you know, parents and grandparents, aunts, uncles, neighbors, all those people that drove you places, took you on, you know, camping trips and all that good stuff, so. And it's a real big honor to do Joe Nelson's, having been one of the troop leaders in Troop 188. Just a lot of fun watching Joe grow up, so, well worked. So this is Mr. Joe Nelson, proclamation for Joe. Whereas to make it publicly known and to recognize Mr. Joe Nelson for earning the title of Mr. South Haven in the 2019 Pageant and for his accomplishments and contributions leading up to this honor. And whereas Joe Nelson is a recent graduate of South Haven High School. In school, Joe was a member of the South Haven Robotics Team, Science Olympiad, Quiz Bowl, Student Council, National Honor Society, Be Nice Program, Band, and Orchestra. And whereas Joe Nelson recently completed his Eagle Scout project, was a 2018 state qualifier for both swimming and track, and a member of the diacredit for the First Congregational Church. Did I get it? Yes. And whereas Joe Nelson served as a tenor drone captain for the marching band, the build team co-captain for the robotics team, and team captain for the cross-country swimming track teams, and while carrying a 4.0 GPA in the classroom. And whereas Joe Nelson volunteers with Boy Scout projects, the National Blueberry Festival, the AAUW Annual Book Sale, mission trips to Haiti, and the annual Memorial Day service. And whereas Joe Nelson will be attending Michigan State University in the fall, majoring in mechanical engineering. Now therefore let it be resolved that the City of South Haven wishes to recognize Mr. Joe Nelson for his accomplishments and service to his community. Well done. So if you guys wanna come up, we'll do some photos. If you guys wanna bring those proclamations down, if you've got them.
You guys are perfect.
You guys are perfect. Proud of it. You're, yeah, you're perfect.
You could all stay there for just one more second. Thank you.
Yeah, that's what, I don't know why, that's what.
Such a good guy.
Wow. Really thinned out.
Wow, what happened?
Maybe we wanna invite him back.
I think now we can have the people waiting in the hallway.
Yep, let them come in.
Come into some of the open chairs.
We were popular for a little while there. All right. We are now ready for the roll call. That was well played on your showing up, by the way. Good work. Travis.
Clark Gruber, sorry, Chris Campbell.
Here.
Clark Gruber.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here. Next, we have the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No, it is approved. Consent agenda items A through E.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through E.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve consent agenda items A through E, is there any discussion? Any public comments? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Campbell.
Yes.
Gruber.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Schlock.
Yes.
Willkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. That takes us to old business. The City Council will be asked to take the following actions related to the application from HTS Direct LLC for issuance of an industrial facilities exemption certificate pursuant to Public Act 198 of 1974. And we're pretty sure just hosting a public hearing, but let's, we'll start with that and then we'll hear from Mr. DeSette. Seek a motion to.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, it is open. Brian, wanna tell us at this point in time?
Sure. Members of council, what you're looking at is, this is HTS Direct, they're located at 1310 Kalamazoo Street. This is the former applied engineering building that was tied to bone aluminum. It's been largely vacant for a number of years. And HTS began looking at the property several months ago. The city tried to roll out the welcome mat in an attempt to get them to relocate from Grand Rapids to South Haven. I'm happy to note that they have done that, and they're spending money. The tax exemption calls for approximately $2 million worth of improvements to the site. If you haven't driven by, please do so. It's dramatic what's going on on both the exterior as well as the interior. Now with that said, a little about HTS. HTS is a, it's a German-based manufacturer, they make moving equipment specifically, I think mill rights would be their main clientele, equipment to move CNC machines and products that are even larger. With that said, they have an operation in South Haven. We hope that with the improvements that are occurring at the Kalamazoo site, we'll also see eventual job creation. For tonight, we are asking a staff that you host the public hearing, receive a public comment, and then table the actual resolution, and here's why. In the staff report, in the resolution, and in the current IFT agreement, there is reference to clawback agreements. We didn't get the clawback agreement finalized with HTS. It is just, it is a minor but important omission, and it's something that the council should not approve this until that clawback agreement's in place. Additionally, there's a little bit of clarity that needs to be reached on the personal property tax. Several years ago, the state of Michigan essentially phased out the PPT, the personal property tax. Prior to that, just about every IFT that was issued included personal property tax in addition to real property. And with the phase out of that personal property tax, you don't need to pull those PPT amounts into IFTs. Well, currently, our IFT also calls for the use of personal property tax, and I don't think we wanna do that because it doesn't provide them any additional benefit, and long term, it could mean less dollars flowing into the city because the state has a formula that accounts for all the personal property tax, and then you get a percent back as part of the phase out of that tax. So with that said, we know that we've got a couple items that need to be polished up before the council considers approval of the IFT. With that said, this IFT is one that staff absolutely recommends, it's something that the investments are occurring out there, you can see the construction occurring, and the applicant is aware of the two-week delay. So I would happily take any questions from council. But again, host your public hearing tonight, and then delay till the second meeting in July for the final approval. Mr. Mayor, any questions?
Nope, so July 15?
Yep.
Sounds good. Well, this, the public hearing is open, or anybody from the public like to discuss this item? Seeing none, wanna close it?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No. I'll just ditto, yeah, it's great to see the work going on over there at that site, a lot of, lot of improvements being made. So that's closed, we just need a motion to table that?
I'll make a motion to table Resolution 2019-34, a resolution approving an industrial facilities exemption certificate for HTS Direct.
Second.
All right, motion second to table, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, we'll table that one. New business, if everyone's agreeable, we have a slate of, I don't think we opened it. What's that?
We did a motion to close the public hearing.
We did. Yeah, we closed it, right? Yeah. Thought I was losing it. So the special events, we have five of them or so. If you guys are game, I'll read through, we can get some information, and then we'll just go as a slate. That sounds agreeable? So the following special event applications are to be considered. First one, council will be asked to consider approval of additions to the previously approved special event 2018-43, the Eighth Annual Salute to Veterans, as described in the documents. So Brian, you wanna, we'll do each one as we go.
Sure. So the first is Special Event 2018-43, Eighth Annual Salute to Veterans, and this is an amendment to the previously approved event. So salute to veterans is now in their eighth year, they work with local fishermen, fisher men and women to haul veterans out onto the lake, they spend the day fishing, they then return through the channel, and a variety of local organizations set up to welcome those folks back. The amendment that the organizers are seeking is to allow for the setup of the Michigan-Vietnam Veteran Memorial Wall. And then additionally, they'd like to have veteran-owned business vendors along the channel. They plan to do all of the setup and teardown, they also plan to clean up after themselves. Staffs reviewed this, we have no concerns.
All right. Next special event, 2019-17 Cemetery Tour 2019 to be held on September the 7th, 2019 from 1:00 p.m. until 3:00 p.m. at the Lakeview Cemetery.
Yeah, this one's kinda interesting, it's a new event, the Historical Association of South Haven, or HASH, wants to host a guided historical tour of the Lakeview Cemetery on September 7th from 1:00 till 3:00. They are working with our local sexton on consulting about the event and specifically some of the history of the grave sites. But this is being run by HASH, but because it's using the other public property, we would ask that the special event be formally blessed by council.
Next special event, 2018-18, the Barber Company Picnic to be held on August the 3rd, 2019 from 1:00 p.m. until 4:00 p.m. at Stanley Johnston Park, and Barbara would like to request a DJ as part of the event.
Yeah, so this is a, it's a Bangor-based business, they're just hoping to bring their staff over for a company picnic on the 3rd of August from 1:00 to 4:00. We usually don't bring these types of events to council, it's just a semi-informal gathering, but it has the potential to be a good-sized group, and also with the request to have a DJ at the picnic, that was something that we felt needed to get kicked up to the council for consideration. This is one that councils should give some consideration to whether or not you wish to allow for the amplified music to be onsite at Stanley Johnston Park.
Next special event, 2019-19, Serve SOHA Sunday to be held on September the 22nd, 2019 from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. at the Huron Street Pavilion.
Yeah, so members of council, myself and Mayor Smith met with the leadership from Life Bridge Church probably about 30 days ago. At that time, the leadership was just trying to figure out ways that that organization can be more involved in the overall community. And out of that, we talked at length about, there's a variety of local organizations that do cleanup work. We listed private businesses, we listed a local bank, we even talked about Kalamazoo College coming down and helping to build the pump track. So through that conversation, the ministers kind of came up with the idea of doing a, just an outdoor service, and then breaking into groups, and they will have a variety of projects lined up that they, between the city, the school, and potentially others, they'll be seeking to provide a team of volunteers to work on fit and finish items.
Sounds good. And then finally, special event 2019-20, the Little Robert Thomas Celebration of Life 2019 to be held on July the 6th, 2019 at 421 Cartwright Street from 3:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m.
Members of council, this is a second year. Linda Jackson approached the council last year, she, you may remember, she lost her son. And the way that she and her family wanted to just memorialize the young man was by having essentially a block party. The, it's a sad situation, but staffs reviewed it, we have no objection. Typically, what we ask is that for the applicants, that they just notify their neighbors, and the most important part is, should there be a need to get fire, ambulance, or police vehicles through, that they understand that they've gotta have those barricades ready to be moved in the event of an emergency. Aside from that, there's no major concerns.
Sounds good. Are there any, I know the amplified music came up, is there anything people wanna discuss out of any of these before we approve them?
We just wanna make, we're not waving the sound ordinance for this event, are we?
No, that's not being asked.
We just wanted to make us aware of that.
Yep, that's the one item that jumped out at me is, it could be a concern.
I have nothing else.
Okay. All right. If anyone has an interest, I'll take this slate.
I'll make a motion to approve Special Event 2018-43, 2019-17, 2019-18, 2019-19, and 2019-20.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Any public questions, comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, it is approved, thank you. Next item, City Council will be asked to consider approval of Resolution 2019-34, a resolution to approve Michigan Department of Transportation Contract Number 19-5346 and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents related to the proposed Broadway Lane Diet Project.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-34, a resolution approving the Michigan Department of Transportation Contract Number 19-5346 and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents related to the proposed Broadway Lane Diet Project.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's talk about the lane diet again.
Yeah, so the council last met on Monday, June 17th, and I've got a feeling that some folks at MDOT may be watching your meetings, because both staff and council talked about the lane diet and expressed some frustration at the lack of speed in getting this project permitted. Well, I, I'm fairly confident that the next morning, I had a letter from MDOT, I think it was June 18th that this was received, that finally we saw a packet beginning to come together. And MDOT was requesting more information, and it appears that we are getting closer to potentially having a permitted project. Now with that said, tonight is yet again a resolution for the City Council's consideration that shows the council is aware of the process that we have to go through, and is aware that if this project is permitted by MDOT, that the City of South Haven is solely responsible for the implementation, and that if MDOT is unhappy with the implementation, they have their right to demand that it be restored to its current configuration. I'm amazed at the fact that we've spent the better part of two years working towards this, but we are getting closer. Now with that said, tonight is yet again a resolution for the City Council's consideration that shows the council is aware of the process that we have to go to, through, and is aware that if this project is permitted by MDOT, that the City of South Haven is solely responsible for the implementation, and that if MDOT is unhappy with the implementation, they have their right to demand that it be restored to its current configuration. I'm amazed at the fact that we've spent the better part of two years working towards this, but we are getting closer. Now with that said, as we move into the DPW Director's Report, I, I think our intent is to just have a somewhat spirited discussion on this project. I would encourage the council to once again approve the, the affirmative resolution. And I can't sit and tell you with any degree of certainty when this project will finally be approved. But I know that MDOT is requesting this. Staff is recommending that you approve it as, as written.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Council comments? Just get her done.
I know I've gotten a lot of feedback expressing a positive desire to have this project go forward, so I'm glad we're making progress in that direction.
I would agree. So let's get it done. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2019-34. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post no. It is approved. Next, citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda. And I have someone coming on up. Gail.
Hello?
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, I just have a few items from the county.
Let's name.
Oh, Gail Patterson.
I know we are, but you know, public record.
Okay. Van Buren County Commissioner. Okay, some of you already might be aware that the county commission agreed to pay $5,000 as an annual appropriation to the South Haven Water Buoy Project. I don't know if you're aware of that, but the buoy's already in the water and, and we're very glad to be able to contribute to that. Also, the Public Defender Budget. Chad Catalino reviewed the changes made to the MIDC budget request for the fiscal year 2019 to 2020 and requested approval for this mission. The budget is approximately $2,747,000. And we approved the grant renewal request for the Michigan Indigent Defense Program and authorized the chief public defender to execute the document on their behalf. Appointments. Commissioners made several appointments or reappointments to various boards, and some of the people are local, so you may recognize their names. Robert Jackson on the jury board, Mike Toth, he's a former county commissioner. He's on the mental health board. Kate Hosier, Cindy Compton, and Dr. Patrick Kriegen on the Van Buren County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And then Dr. Andrew Vick is going, was appointed to the Canexus Board. There were several proclamations that the county gave, and one was to Jeff Mills for appreciation of his service to the county and serving on county boards, specifically the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And also then the, there was a proclamation for the South Haven Cesca Centennial Celebration, which I read previously. Do you have any questions? No? Okay.
Thanks for the update.
And thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Going once, going twice? Public Works Director update, Mr. Bill Hunter.
Good evening, Your Honor. Council members, I'd like to give an update on DPW projects in the City of South Haven. Lakeview Cemetery improvements, that project is still underway. We have concrete staircases. The forms are set and they should be poured anytime this week. The concrete entry sign that's on blue star, often blue star, the footings will begin probably, I think they were probably poured last week and the sign is ready to be, it's already delivered. Then landscaping to be scheduled once these items are complete. So it's just about substantially completed. Well, this should be right now, and it looks like a final completion is, per the contract, July 12th. Splash pad, we have everything ready to go to the planning commission, which will be July 11th. We'll be presenting the splash pad to the planning commission. Road diet, did a little lead into early in the, in the council meeting, what you guys agreed to was actually called the maintenance agreement. It's a part of actually the permit process. As Brian says, it looks like it does moving forward. There are some still hurdles that we're working on. One of them is, and I've been getting emails back from the MDOT, is they want meeting minutes for meetings that I cannot provide minutes for. So I'm trying to work through that. It, it's frustrating. Brian's a little bit more of a half-full kind of guy than I am. We kind of equal each other out. I'm half, so I'm the other half, so I, but as Brian says, I can't give you a date yet. I'm working through this. One of my fears of this project is MDOT coming back saying, this is not the project we want you to do, meaning they changed something. And I've expressed this to Brian. I sold actually this project to every meeting that I've been to. This is the project we're doing based on courtesy reviews by MDOT. I do believe actually if we change anything, I would recommend to my boss and to you that we should actually do public input with the public if they change it. Because I do fear actually if we install something that we did not sell or I didn't sell, we lose credibility as a whole. And Brian?
So put simply, we spent two years going to neighborhood groups, going to Ward 1, Ward 2, push, you name it, a variety of neighborhood groups trying to build consensus on something, whether or not it was truly desired by, by the residents of South Haven. We have gone business to business. We've heard good, we've heard bad, but we've spent two years trying to push this project forward. What we anticipate is MDOT could say, that's fine, but we want to see X, Y, and Z changes. And those changes could be very minor. It could be a simple lengthening of a turn lane. They could be very major. And before we invest another three months, six months, 12 months, and potentially significantly more staff time and consulting time, at the last council meeting, we had a resident bring up the fact that he wanted to see the lane diet, or put simply, a traffic signal. And we don't tend to bring this council ideas where we just spitball. But between my frustration and Bill's frustration, we're at a point of, we want to spitball some ideas by the council. If the council feels as though we're looking at another six months, nine months, or 12 months of public input and additional permitting, would the council be desirous of staff working to develop a concept where we restore the traffic signal at Superior? We may not be able to get the lane diet done. It's not our road. We don't get the final say-so. And if we do get that permit, it may be very different than what's been sold locally. I never envisioned that we would be this far in and be saying to the council and to the public that I can't say with certainty that we'll ever get this lane diet approved. We seem to be getting some positive traction, but my fear is that we're going to go another year and be no closer to making the thing happen. Now, we've always known as, as staff that if we focus our efforts on just restoring a traffic signal, that does nothing to slow traffic as it gets closer to Ailworth. It does nothing to improve pedestrian safety for high school students running across Broadway to get to McDonald's. And that's what's driven this project. This project is all about trying to ensure that young people have the very safest route possible. And fundamentally, having three lanes of traffic is going to be safer for pedestrians than having five lanes. But we are deep into this project and we have no confidence as to whether or not MDOT will ever allow us to do it. We're at a point where we can start having a conversation with MDOT that, where we just go in and just ask for candid feedback, that are they more likely to permit a, a traffic signal than they are to permit a lane diet? At this point, we're talking similar numbers. All in for the lane diet to be completed with traffic signal, or I'm sorry, with pedestrian signals and the various ADA ramps, you're probably in a $200,000 range. It's similar cost to put up a new traffic signal. By no means am I saying a, a traffic signal is going to provide a long-term benefit the way the lane diet, we believe, will. But I know that we can get a traffic signal permitted in less time and have this thing actually built likely in this current fiscal year. So I'm asking the council, I'm not asking for formal direction, but I am looking for some informal guidance on, is that something that you would like, like to see us pursuing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a couple items. One would be, I wouldn't, if we receive the permit from MDOT and they change it, do we have the right to turn that permit down?
Yes, we do.
And second of all, if they issue a permit and looks almost the same as what it is, my concern is that we're trying to implement it a week before school starts. So my concern, as I stated at the last meeting time, is of the essence. I think there's a certain timeframe that we have to deal with, that we would want to implement that. And I'm wondering if we have any leeway, if they do give us the permit, maybe we delay it. I, I don't know if that's an option or not, but just wondering more of what that is.
Yeah, we've got some, we've got some ability to just use practical judgment. And the worst thing that we could do is set up this lane diet two days before fireworks. The second worst thing we could do is try and do it two days before the start of school. We are going to ensure that people will not understand that there will be failures, that there will be tickets and potentially accidents. That's not what we want. We want to give local residents as much time as possible to get used to the change and then have as long as possible for, for those locals to adjust their driving habits as we welcome in summer visitors.
Lastly, I would say I, I wouldn't want to send possibly the wrong signal to the state by asking them for a traffic light. I agree that we have a lot invested in this.
Yeah.
We've all pretty much agreed to it. I don't think I would want to send a wrong signal to them, that we're willing to change our ideas of what we know is right.
Okay.
That's my opinions.
I guess, I'm, I'm thinking long-term and that from a long-term approach, I think the lane diet is a much better option. And so I'm not willing to, to forego that option just for, because it might be a little easier to get the traffic signal.
I live at the Superior spot. I can remember when the traffic signal was there and it was awesome. And I remember when it got taken away, and it's been tough. Tried to cross the road the other day with my wife, and we were just laughing. We're like, I'm, thank God we don't have kids anymore. I think that's a quick, great thing to happen, but it's not for the greater good for the entire road. I would like to show force and continue to go forward with the entire lane diet because I don't know what the families would do from Superior Street all the way. Literally, the only safe place on that road is Phoenix Street and, and next to Woodhams. And everything else is, you take your life in your own hands to try to go across there. So no, I think we need to pull forward. I, I know what you're trying to do with suggestions, and that's what staff should do. But no, I think we hold our own and continue on.
Go ahead.
Two questions. Is the problem with the lane diet because of the location of it, or is it lane diets in general? And the reason I ask, just recently between Douglas and Sawcutuck, they did a lane diet. And it's not the easiest one to track if you're a motorist, but they did it. So, you know, what can we learn from that? What we, can we ask them? Or is it just because this is such a different area, that's where MDOT's having a problem?
MDOT actually has done many lane diets themselves. So it's not just, it's not the lane diet. It's actually the, the design itself and some of the devices that we are using. For example, we're using some, some dedicated turnoff lanes that they're not at some of the intersections that we believe actually will prevent stacking. Because what we're trying to do with the lane diet is, yes, pedestrian safety, yes to slow traffic down, but also to accommodate as much traffic as we can, so a balance, we're trying to do. MDOT's looking at, they look at things more of a black and white. It has to be this or all nothing. So some of their suggestions, when I reviewed it with them personally, I told them, and I, not personally, I had staff in there, but when I reviewed and they had questions on some of those things I just mentioned, like for example, the dedicated right turn to get off to prevent stacking going south from Phoenix towards Superior, I told them the reason why. And, and I also said, now if I change this, I'm going to have to talk to the businesses around, because that was some of the input we received from the businesses. This was, these are some of the things, then we presented this preliminary plan to them that we readjusted and went back to the businesses to sell this. And that's why I kind of go back to my previous statement. We made these changes. We sold it to the corridor. Now if MDOT says, well, eliminate it, it'd be hard pressed to do that. So that was a few of them. There were actually two of the devices I've mentioned before about the perimeter W11s. They, they wanted a special study done on that. They wanted, instead of that, was that flashing light that just constantly flashes. Well, I told them, I disagree with that. I disagree with a flat, a light that constantly flashes. People get used to a light that flashes. It doesn't bring anything out to them. They go, oh, the light's flashing. But if you have a light that only flashes when somebody hits a pedestal, that's, that's safer. So we got into a disagreement with that, but they're going to proceed and they did some counts at those certain areas. And those signs are approved by the federal highway. So I'm not sure some of the reasoning behind it. But I guess to get back to your question, it's not the lane diets. They, they have done lane diets. It's this particular one. And they would like to see some changes.
And to follow up on that statement, the thing that's got us scratching our heads, the lane diet that occurred, I want to say around 2008 on Phillips Street by the Wellness Center, that was initiated by MDOT. That's their road. That was their idea. They implemented a lane diet. They went from four lanes down to, to three. And it just seems like a natural follow-up for the city to pursue the lane diet on the bigger corridor. And for whatever reason, we just continue running into more questions and more delays. We really wanted to just have a candid conversation with council tonight to make sure that we're marching in the right direction. Because between myself and Bill, we're so far into this that we're completely sold on the project. We want to see it implemented. But as we've just been looking at this and realizing how much time has been invested, and how many dollars have been invested, we realized we're at a point where a traffic signal could be quicker and similar money. But we also recognize that a traffic signal does nothing for the overall corridor. It just provides one safety improvement in one very specific area.
I frequently cite the Phillips example, and people look for an example, say, we did it. And at first it was weird, because I drive, I remember it was, but then it's perfect.
Yeah.
Works just fine. My comment would be, I would tend to agree. Stick to our guns. Don't hold, you know, hold our cards tight until we, if we get a flat-out no, I'll be the first one to agree we should look at alternatives. So in the meantime, trudge on.
Anything else?
Just real quick, just to finish up, Your Honor. We have a, the Kids Corner Phase 1, bids were open for that. The engineer's estimate for that project was 105,463. A low bid came in at 102. This will be presented to City Council. Unfortunately, we couldn't get it on this agenda. It'll be on the next agenda for recommendation of approval. So that project is continuing to go forward. That one there, we're actually getting a matching grant of 45,000. So that's good news. The Electric Project, 76 Project is still underway. We're looking at substantial completion now of July 20th, Core City Phase 4. That's a substantial completion of August 2nd. Designs are completed for 8th Street, and we're looking for that to be constructed. That'll be in the fall. Staff is still working for, working on proposals for the Veterans Detention Pond and DPW. South Beach will be opening up that outlet. Actually, we dug it up early this year. We had to bury it up. The outlet's gone. So we have to repair that and put one in. That happens. Dumpster enclosure, that should be done in July on the Water Street Dumpster Enclosure. The W11-2 signs, we went to go put those up and we had the wrong solar panels, so got to send some stuff back. Rule of thumb, when something gets in, open up the box first and inventory it. So lesson learned. Pearl Street pavement improvements at DPW are 100% designed. Bids have been received and construction is underway. Final paving, we're expecting the week of July 8th. HydroCorp continues to do their cross connection inspections. The materials inventory list, we have that completed. The materials inventory list, we have that completed, and that will be submitted to DEQ on time. That's a January of 2020 requirement. And we, I just got news this afternoon, we had all of our results in for lead and copper sampling in South Haven Township and Casco Township. That's a, we received a non-detect in, 90th percentile non-detect in Casco and South Haven Township, and Covert was 90th percentile non-detect. So, we've got good, clean water. And also had results back from the state. The state's been doing PFAS testing. And they've been doing, they're doing all the water plants up and down Lake Michigan, testing the raw water and the finished water. And we got non-detect on everything. So, if anybody ever asks.
Very good.
PFAS. And PFAS is a very general PFAS, or it's actually about 20 different chemicals. So, it's a lot of different ones. And the Blueberry Tank is going underway. You see the primer on it, and they're about ready to paint. So it's going to be a nice-looking tower when it's done. And City Council, have any questions over any of the projects moving over today, or anything else, as a matter of fact?
They're watching the water tower, which is a lot of fun, as it become uncovered today. And it is very dull, but it's primer. So will they wrap it and then paint it, or do they paint it unwrapped? Just a question.
They paint it unwrapped.
They paint it unwrapped, so we can watch it unfold?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
That's a lot of fun, if you haven't been down there to see a big, huge water tower.
Yeah. And I must admit, when I, when we first approved this, and the price tag is, you know, makes your heart jump. Then you watch the process, you understand the, I mean, it's an amazing process to just see it. I mean, as they, sorry, draped the canopy over to do the abatement, it was, it's a very impressive process.
All at 100 feet in the air?
Right, yeah. I mean, they're up there, and I swear they're having lunch on the top. I mean, little guys up there, it's very impressive. So I will, I my hat's off to them for doing that work, and thank goodness they do, because, no thanks.
Yes.
Lot of work. And that's just exterior.
Yes, that's just exterior.
Very good.
All cleaning. And we do have scheduled, actually, an interior inspection of the concrete stamp pipe. And that'll be next couple of weeks. That's actually, they do an RV, and they dump it. So they chlorinate the whole RV, and they dump it into the tank, and it does a little inspection while the tank is still in place.
Wow. Very cool. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, just real quick history lesson, this'll take two minutes. But that water tower that is adjacent to 1310 Kalamazoo Street was originally constructed to help with just water pressure for the former bone aluminum plant. And we've been going through a quite a quiet title action related to that water tower. And it's just, it's one of these that sometime in the late 60s, there appears to have just been some clerical errors, just missed actions by the council. So put simply, that piece of property was originally owned by the piston manufacturing site. They deeded it to the City Council with the intent that they wanted a fire station right next door to their plant. I'm sure that made sense. For whatever reason, I can't find the logic, but the city and the leadership at the plant agreed that an elevated water tower boosting water pressure made sense. So that water tower's been sitting on that site for decades, and we were unable to find where the city actually owned that piece of land. So, we had a very strong case. We worked through the court process, but we had to do a quiet title action to take final possession of the land where our water tower sat for several decades. But the interesting part on this was, as we went through the quiet title action, we pulled up old, just news articles about bone aluminum and about the ownership of the plant, just trying to make sure that we were sending notices to the proper authorities. And it was interesting, we found an article about Gulf and Western, the ownership of the aluminum plant. And this article was actually from, I believe, The Hollywood Reporter, where it noted that Gulf and Western was divesting itself from piston manufacturing and moving more towards the entertainment industry. So it was just kind of a neat thing. I'd never realized that part of their logic at the time was to sell the plant, to divest from the auto industry and move their dollars into film production. So.
Paramount Studios.
Yeah, Paramount Studios.
I can, I can ring you the historian, Mr. Ed Harris, and he can fill us in.
The mayor just robbed me of my closing statement. I was going to say, so that was the tieback. It was just kind of interesting that Paramount Studio ultimately, that was one of the sales as Gulf and Western moved into the film production. With the sale of this manufacturing plant, they were able to eventually become Paramount Studios. So, and yes, the mayor is related to a local historian who may have sat in one of the chairs out at Bone Aluminum.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Who hired your grandfather. Ultimately, you got it. There's history there, so.
Small world.
Good stuff, small world.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I do have a couple of items to run through. First up is the fireworks announcement. As I think all of you saw, we were playing it kind of day-by-day by ear, watching for us northwest winds. The big fear from staff, as well as the fireworks committee, was that if we had a strong northwest wind, given the lake level, the potential for that water rolling up onto the pier during the fireworks setup, and the actual show was just getting higher and higher. Thankfully, the weather appears to have improved. We have gone ahead and announced to local media, local organizations, and to our local residents that the show will proceed. So it is set to occur on the 3rd at approximately 10:30 PM. This year's show will last about 20 minutes. It will be synced to CW7. The drawbridge will operate on its regular schedule until approximately 11:30 PM. At that time, it will be closed to vehicle and pedestrian traffic. It will be raised to allow boats to pass through. And with the high water levels, even if it's a small boat, you pretty much have to have that bridge in the raised position to get the boats through safely. Cozy will be broadcasting throughout the day, as well as they'll be doing the synced music, and then also traffic alerts. You can park at the seven bathing beaches. Just remind yourself that space is limited. And the Independence Parade is set to go on the 4th at 11:00 AM. And I just caught a typo in my press release. It's not Tuesday the 4th. So, that is what's going on with fireworks. Real quickly, we've got, we've got some officers in the room that I just wanted to really just call out for absolutely operating in effective and brave manner. Our officers are now all equipped with chest cams, and I just can't say enough good things about chest cams. We did have a near drowning event at the end of last week. And within probably six hours of that event, the police chief was sitting at my desk with her laptop up, and I was able to watch the first responders as they attempted to save a gentleman's life. And we have just, I just think it's important to note that Kevin Van Brussels, Tony Bailey are two of the officers who worked on this gentleman. But then, Keen, did he leave? Oh, shoot. I saw Keen walk in, but he took off. But those three individuals worked for the better part of 30 minutes to restore a pulse for this victim. He is still alive. He's in critical condition. But the officers teamed with South Haven Area Emergency Services gave this individual the very best chance at survival. As I sat and watched the chest cams, the speed in their response, and then the thoroughness in their response was really impressive. So absolutely compliments to Chief Thompson and her team for their efforts. And then lastly, is a real positive thing. On September 9th, so 9/9/19, will be a requesting council attend a joint session. Several of you have talked about the importance of affordable housing. Over the last better part of six months, we've been working to schedule a joint housing review session. This will be the City Council, the South Haven Charter Township, and the South Haven Housing Commission coming together under one roof. We have coordinated with Ryan Kilpatrick of Housing Next. Ryan was down in South Haven about three months ago, giving one of the Thursday Night Speaker Series talks. He has agreed to lead the conversations. We're going to be taking a look at a micro level and then a macro level. Currently, at the micro level, the city's local development finance authority owns the Overton site. It is property that we own free and clear, and we have worked through the master plan to try and develop a vision for what should be built there. The Housing Commission has agreed that they're very interested in taking on a capital project. Housing Commission has done a lot of great things over the past several decades, but they have not built new in many, many years. And this is something that's real exciting, to try and bring the Housing Commission to the table to help with the overall developments exciting. The better part is, that's at the micro level. At the macro level, South Haven Charter Township has agreed that they want to be at the table, and they're willing to pay a third of the professional services fees, so that as we look at affordable housing, that we're not just looking at one site. We're looking at 100 to 200 acres of available land that's in short proximity to the city limits. So I'm excited. This is a chance to truly engage in a partnership. It's a chance to try and get something built at the Overton site. But then it's a chance to formally partner with the surrounding agencies to try and bring more housing options to the overall South Haven community. I'll say, sending each of you a note, but remember 9/9/19. And we'll be hosting this, hopefully, at the high school. So those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. It's very encouraging on that workshop.
Yeah.
All right. City Council, I'll start to my right.
I just want to congratulate the young women who were winning awards tonight. I am absolutely amazed that they have the time, energy, and intelligence to accomplish all they did. And if in their short life so far, they continue to live like that, this country and this world will be a better place. And if they continue to accomplish things like that, we'll all benefit. So I just want to, again, say it was an honor reading Chloe's accomplishments. I'm sure we all share that. It was just amazing. Thanks.
I also must say, I'm very impressed with the youth of our community, and this is a great example tonight. And I want to say hats off to Bill Hunter and his team on the upgrades to the electric system. I think that's going to pay dividends later on, so appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell?
I'm going to say no comment tonight.
Very good.
And also shout out to, I think, Joe Nelson, the king.
King.
As well. So we did have a young man in there. Also, the fireworks is a go. It's so much fun to read Facebook and hear all the different rumors about fireworks. It brings joy to my heart to listen to the 14 or 15 different scenarios that were out there.
Yeah, we picked quite a few good locations. They moved all over the place.
It's amazing.
It's pretty good.
Also, the parade. Got a phone call from my brother today, who happened to read the newspaper, and to tell me that my dad is going to be the grand marshal. Just did not know that. And I've known this man my whole life. You know, he moved here in '61, sat down at the soda fountain at McDonald Drug Store, and in one meeting, got a job, got a lease for an apartment, and a job for my mom. And I didn't know them at the time. It was like a whole year later before I met them. So, you know, I think that's pretty cool. So, come to the parade, and the gentleman with a lot of wisdom up front waving. I kind of look like him, only younger. There you go. That's it.
Very good. Thank you.
My comments would be to thank staff. I talked to a staff member earlier this morning about preparations for this weekend, and I'm sure our police department, fire, and first responders are all working extra hard this week. I'd like to thank them and wish everybody a happy and safe fireworks on 4th of July.
I would just like to congratulate the Miss South Haven Court, as well as Mr. South Haven. Congratulations to them.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'll just ditto to our first responders. Thank you for all that you do. Bill, water staff, thanks to them for our outstanding water. Splash Pad, July the 11th, 7:00 PM, Planning Commission. So we've been working at this for a long time. We've had a lot of meetings. We've had a ton of public input. We've had, our local elementary schools even got to weigh in and vote on it. So, it's pretty overwhelming support. Last weekend, my neighbors piled out of their car after we gone for a day. They were at the Splash Pad out of town. So I mean, it'd be nice to see these folks coming to town. I'd love to see this thing built by the end of this year. So I hope folks come out and support that at that Planning Commission meeting, and we should get it a couple of weeks after that. And just, just a couple comments for that. As mayor, I really enjoy getting out and talking, you know, to individuals and businesses. One thing that the City Council has said, our top priority is to help businesses grow, you know, to thrive. And in talking to our downtown merchants, I frequently hear it's difficult just navigating through the sign ordinance. Won't name any names, but it's quite frequent. I know the staff and the attorney have worked on the issue in the past, but changes to the rules have been kind of slow to come. And I would just like to suggest it, I will, I'll maybe look to Chris and others to say, you know, I'd like to see our staff spend some time working with the Planning Commission to get the signed ordinance language, you know, the amendment language discussion going again. Because we've got the hail blocks starting to happen. We've had discussions about wayfinding. Is there better wayfinding? You know, so just to look at that to make it more business friendly, so we could, if we can knock down barriers, I mean, listen to staff, listen to the merchants, and let's just see if we can make it more friendly. So if they're looking to, you know, prove their businesses, you know, reasonably, obviously, we want it to be good, and the PC will make sure it's good. I'd just like to have them take a look at it, so that these projects, you know, especially as we look to Center Street reconstruction, can succeed. So, I don't, you're a merchant, so I don't know if that's, you know.
Well, with the sign ordinance, it's come to my attention that there's been multiple complaints involving some of the signs, especially in CBD. Some of the rules are a little bit antiquated at this point, such as one building contain one sign, even though it's, we're breaking up buildings now into multiple businesses, still one sign. So, one thing I believe that the council should look at is honestly sending this to the zoning and look at updating this. And also, I believe that we should look at signage and maybe signage slash directories for downtown, kind of to help guide people as well. So I'd love to, if I could, make a motion to send this to zoning, if it's possible.
I think it'd be planning. It'd be, it'd be PC. Yeah, it'd be PC.
Planning Commission, sorry. Yeah, it would be the Planning Commission. Okay. I'm not sure that a motion's needed. It's something that, we get it. We have actually tried to start this conversation with the Planning Commission a few months ago, and we're eager to get it back in front of them. Clark, was that four or five months ago?
And it was. And I know Planning Commission has kicked it around, because a lot of times when, when opportunities come in front of us, you know, we mull over the sign ordinance, because we know it is antiquated. There's some great stuff in there, some other stuff that's hard to figure out why. But, you know, every once in a while, a big project gets given to the Planning Commission, and we look at how much time we have. And we move, you know, whether it's marijuana, whether it's short-term rentals, and then you've got people who request an actual project. So you kind of have to look at, what do you do when you're not doing just projects? But I think now is probably a good time to look at it, as long as, you know, we don't look at some kind of, you know, due date of a month or two, and we have to have special meetings again. But I think now's a good time. It's been quite a while, and there's been some court cases that help, help with a better understanding of what we could do for the future.
Sure. Especially with Center Street. I mean, I think the timing is good. So, very good. All right, those are my comments.
Okay.
So, next, we are going to, I'll be looking for a motion, and after this, we will be, we're going into closed session. That'll end the meeting. We'll come back out after that, and we will adjourn the meeting after that time. So after this, we will be kicking everybody out. So next, City Council will be asked to consider a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act Number 267 of 1978, 15.268, Section 8A for annual personnel evaluation for the city manager.
Make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to the Michigan Open Meetings Act for annual personnel evaluation for city manager.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or discussion? See now, all's in favor, say. Roll call, sorry.
Hi. Gruber?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. And thanks, everybody, for coming. Appreciate your stopping by tonight and listening in. Take five?
Take five.
Take five.